Call the meeting to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions, changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I have one addition, this would be item five, six A, excuse me, I'm sorry. Six A, four county players backstage expansion project, I've spoke with each one of you today about this being a late item for you today.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anyone else?
Motion to approve is modified second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, special appearances, we don't have any consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
New business, resolution to adopt and appropriate the fiscal year 2020 operating and capital budgets. Ms. Bradley.
You have in front of you the resolution to adopt the budget for fiscal 20. As we've spoken before, the net consolidated budget is $106 million roughly. And we had the public hearing one week ago, the state code requires that we wait seven days following the public hearing before adopting the budget. But if there are any questions about the budget, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions, I'm going to do about the budget?
Motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I guess we should do a roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Goodwin.
Aye.
Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. Frain.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And Mr. White.
Aye. We now have a budget.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly want to express everybody's help in all this. Certainly, Mr. White and Mr. Johnson's help and Glenda, myself, and Connie's work, and then all the departments to be able to pull this together. We start this process in October, I guess it is, Glenda?
Um, right.
About October, so.
You say start, does it ever end?
Well, I was going to say we're.
Almost time to start again?
Yeah.
We'll be starting this up, but I appreciate you all's work on, and I think now after this is the fifth budget that I've been able to work with Glenda on, in particular, I think we now have this down to a pretty efficient process that meets your all's expectations, so, but appreciate your help.
Okay, ordinance to establish the tax levies.
Oh, you mean we have to pay for it?
The citizens.
We have to pay for the budget?
That's somebody else's job.
That's right.
Anything you want to tell us about that, other than?
Just that there's no change in the tax levies, the real estate rate is still to be set at 80.4 cents. Personal property, $3.75, business tangible personal property at 2.20. There is not any change in any of the tax rates for the fiscal 20 year.
Motion to approve, second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes, I brought this up at our last meeting, but everyone needs to keep in mind both, well, the board, the employees, the citizens. When we did the bonds, it was determined that there would be zero of anything changing, probably for the next three years. And due to hard work by any number of people, we've been able to make some improvements, do a little bit of widening, and maintain the taxes where they've been at ever since we did the tax increase back when you had to call a tow truck when you called for a Medicare. So I think it says a whole lot for the staff and all the planning within the county to be able to do this and still move forward at the same tax rate.
Well, it's, yes, I think we're into our, this will be our fifth budget in the wake of that year that the taxes were increased, where we've held the line on the taxes. And what we, our plan was and our adopted financial policies were that we were going to live within our means and not use tax increases as an easy out. So far, we have stuck to our guns and done that, and as you say, it's, with the increased revenue coming in, it's worked very well. We've grown the, we've grown the economy instead of strangling the one that was already here.
And I think, as you mentioned, it's also important to recognize the staff, I think, has understood the policies and what we're trying to accomplish and what the constraints are, and this, as you know, this budget is built from the bottom up. I mean, it really starts with a call to all the departments and department heads and ask them to start defining their, the changes that they're recommending and these kind of things, and to be basically on the same path, I think, is really important because I think there's a certain discipline that has been part of that, and people aren't asking for things that they know don't fit within the broad policy environment that we've established. And so, we're in a good place, I think, is, as you say, and we should, you know, take some pride frankly in the ability to work through something like this, especially, I mean, I don't write $106 million checks every day, I don't know about the rest of you, but to wrestle that gorilla to the floor is quite a challenge, and I think we should, we should take at least a half a lap of celebration frankly to get where we are.
I know it may be considered as somewhat obscure document, but I think that the public should understand what our financial policy document says because I think that tells a lot in terms of how we approach taking the citizens' tax money and how we spend it. I mean, that's just a, it's a broad-based document, we've been able to stick to that pretty effectively. And I think that's just something that people should look at, and it's available out there. We haven't voted yet. Any other discussion?
Let's set the taxes. Allison, let's do a roll call.
Sure, Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. Frain.
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin.
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And a special thanks to you, you really were the spear that made this happen. Okay, contract with computer aided dispatch, Amanda. And Stephanie.
Good evening. On October 4th, 2018, a solicitation was released seeking qualified firms to submit proposals to the county with a computer aided dispatch system solution, also known as a CAD system. We received seven responses to the solicitation that the selection committee narrowed down to four offerers who provided demonstrations. Repetitive demonstrations were held with the top two offerers, and after thorough review and negotiations, it is recommended to award a contract to Central Square Zerture Technologies. This vendor highlights a robust information technology platform, unique customization opportunities, highly trained conversion and implementation staff, along with other functions that best suit the county. Staff recommends executing a contract with Central Square Zerture Technologies, which funding has been appropriated. With that being said, we have staff members here tonight that will be utilizing the system that can answer any specific questions you may have.
Is this a, a contract is likely to spread into a multi-year effort, or is it contained in a?
Yes, sir, it's similar to the MUNIS ERP, so this is the CAD, this is something that I hope to not be in the CIP again for another 15 to 20 years. So it will encompass the computer aided dispatch as well as the record management system for the sheriff's office, and actually, it's going to put about 15 to 20 different independent systems and programs we have out there together under one roof, which is why we had folks who were utilizing every component of it on our selection committee.
Is there a continuing beyond the installation, is there a continuing support contract?
Yes, sir, similar to what we have now, it's about $65,000 a year, we pay that now currently to Tyler Technologies. The current CAD is through New World, but Tyler purchased it in 2015, so we pay them recurring maintenance. The maintenance includes upgrades, it also includes the hardware upgrades, which is somewhat unique. They sort of build that pricing into their annual maintenance, so every five years, we're not hit with having to buy new servers.
So, help me understand this contract amount that we were approving tonight, does that include the first year's maintenance or something like that?
Yes, sir, so this is a conversion and implementation, so the software licenses, the purchase of the initial hardware, the conversion implementation in year one of maintenance, so we won't have another fee until the year two of maintenance, so after we've gone live for a year.
Okay.
And those rates, we've locked those in for the next five years, so we know exactly what they're going to be.
All right, any other questions? How about a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. Okay, public safety radio project tower zoning permits.
Yes, sir. So for the requirements of our zoning ordinance, tonight, I'm presenting to you statements of public necessity for all of the tower sites relevant due to their height. Those tower sites are for Barbersville, Mountain Track, and the Wilderness Shores area, and the Teak Tower. So at this point in time, I'm just asking for permission to open up the required 30-day public comment period, and I'm hoping to start that tomorrow.
Have you, what procedures are you going to follow with that? Is it, are you going to announce it on the website and make it available?
Yes, sir, and we have a press release, so the press release has different ways that folks can notify us, it needs to be done in writing, so we've indicated an email address, a mailing address, or if they wish to turn something in person, where to go and to whom to speak. And then with that notice, I'm going to be attaching all of these statements of public necessity, so they'll have that information as well.
Okay, and that press release will be available?
If you all are all right with me doing that, it'll be ready tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So it's a press release as opposed to a required publication?
Correct.
All right, any questions for Stephanie on that? Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, you'll be back, but you may sit for a while if you like. Long-term care insurance, Allison.
Members of the board, we were recently made aware of an enrollment period whereby the county could begin participating in the Commonwealth of Virginia Volunteer Group Long-Term Care Insurance Program. It is a program that is administered by the Virginia Retirement System. And we have been given an election period through June 14th. Because we're not currently participating in the program, this is an opportunity for us to begin participating. As noted in the memo, what VRS defines as actively at work employees under the age of 66 can apply for this coverage. There are some medical underwriting requirements depending on age and, I think, employee versus family member. But you could, they could be eligible for this long-term care coverage for themselves and for eligible family members. Because the employees pay the insurance premiums, it is an optional benefit for the employees, and we can provide this benefit to our employees at absolutely no cost to the county. You'll see here that there are several benefit options to employees, you know, depending on what they want their monthly benefits to be. And this would be used for long-term care, you know, likely at or beyond retirement age. But it's an opportunity for employees to plan for that benefit today. It will assist with the cost of these long-term care services, nursing home care, in-home care. And this is a completely different benefit for our employees because medical insurance that we offer now does not cover these types of services. So depending on what they wanted to plan for, there are monthly benefit options available through this plan. There are also benefit increase options that employees can purchase that help kind of protect their coverage for the future to deal with inflation and things like that, it'll help them plan. Another benefit for this is that because they, employees are paying the premiums directly to the insurance company, the plan is completely portable if they were to leave our employment here, which I did provide some detailed brochures on that. Staff from HR and Management Services are thrilled about being able to provide this additional benefit to our employees, again, at no cost to the county, it would be completely voluntary for the employee to participate.
Maybe it's a question to Tom, the employer adoption agreement that's in here. When I first looked at it, it appeared that they weren't really asking the employer to do very much or agree to very much, and then I saw some things that.
Number three.
Yeah, number three, we acknowledge and agree to the terms and conditions established in the plan. Well, I'm not sure we have a role in this enough to do, I mean, I see this as a boilerplate form they want to sign, and so our ability to deal, to make changes is probably limited. But it just seemed odd that they had this kind of an agreement when the plan is actually, if I understood it correctly, between the employee and Genworth or whoever the firm, wasn't it Genworth? Orange County has not even an administrative role, as I understood it, is that, is that your understanding as well?
Is not the plan sponsor VRS?
Yes, sir, the plan sponsor is Virginia Retirement System.
Not the county.
I was just a little bit confused about the role they wanted the county to play in executing this adoption agreement.
I suspect one of it is, we provide them with a list of people to send the announcements to, and we provide them the opportunity. So basically, we are just helping their sales process.
Well, this.
We would do payroll deductions.
Right, okay.
And also, just so you're aware, both the Central Virginia Regional Jail Authority and the Planning District have adopted this as well. It's new, it's not something that's been offered in the past to statewide to VRS employees.
No, I mean, I think it's a, it's a good thing to offer to the employees, I'm not opposed to it at all, I just, it didn't seem to track. At some point, maybe we need to, you know, get some feedback from you whenever you're ready as to the agreement and whether there's, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to find gremlins that don't exist, but there's some odd language.
Well, you're talking about that paragraph three, or item three, the employer acknowledges agrees to terms and conditions established in the plan. I think all this is saying legally is, we are good with those terms because since technically we're, our employees are involved, I think they want us signing off saying, we don't take issue with anything in your, in your terms of agreement, so that we down, so that nobody down the road said, well, the county didn't know our employees were agreeing to X, Y, or Z. So like, since we're not a party to the, to the actual agreement, this is simply saying, we don't have anything we have a problem with in that agreement you're signing with our employees.
It's the employees who are going to have to agree to the terms and conditions.
Right, this, this is just simply saying, it's almost like a waiver, the county's waiving any objection it would have to any of those terms that you're having our employees sign, we're okay with them, is what we're saying.
Okay, and you didn't find anything in there that troubled you particularly, okay, all right.
I would think that, I would hope that the Virginia Retirement System has something in there to advise people because this is pretty complex, there's a lot of, of, I would say loopholes. And I would like to make sure that when these people decide to do this, that they get some decent advice on this because I think this is a big, this is a big commitment, and this is, as I'm going through all those little conditions that were.
Well, there's, in the fine print, there's a note at the very top of the form that says, "The language in this resolution has been approved by VRS Benefit Council and is not subject to modification." Somebody hands me something like that and my antenna begins to tingle, so, that's what I understand. All right. I guess what we have is a motion or a resolution to allow us to execute this adoption agreement, is that what?
Yes, sir, what we are looking for is a motion to authorize you, as the chairman, to sign the employer adoption agreement, which we would provide before the June deadline, and then we would correspond with VRS and Genworth going forward on the required information, that we will provide effective dates when we can roll it out to employees, if we can pair it with open enrollment, that sort of thing.
Okay, so moved, all right, I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Allison, and Stephanie?
I have one more.
Oh, oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, you do. Personnel policy amendments, yes.
In front of you is what I'm hoping is the last set of personnel policy amendments related to our jurisdiction-wide deviation application for the Department of Social Services. If you'll recall, in December, we had a work session and you all considered amendments for seven or eight policies, dated policies that were largely related to this effort. And we knew at that time we had revisions necessary to our family and medical leave policy, but they had not been prepared. So I have brought them to you this evening for your consideration. We were also recently made aware of a requirement to revise our equal employment opportunity policy to recognize a Code of Virginia requirement. So both of those changes have been incorporated into the proposed policies that are in front of you. The family and medical leave policy has been reviewed by the county attorney's office, and we are compliant with applicable law in that regard. It was largely updated to better organize the policy, align it with applicable law, better define some of the items related to family and medical leave, and to better define the county's responsibility related to FMLA and the employee, the employees' responsibility related to FMLA. We were also required to revise the policy to recognize 26 weeks that are provided for military caregiver leave and exigency leave. So that has been incorporated into the draft policy in front of you. And then on policy 1.1, there was a small change that's shown in, track changes at the very bottom, but we were required to recognize Code of Virginia, section 15 dot 2 dash 1509 regarding preferences for veterans in local government employment. And we have, consistent with the requirements of state code, we have provided that consideration in this policy.
Is this wording straight out of state code?
Yes, sir, this wording is straight out of state code.
A question for Tom on this. If somebody meets all the requirements, eligibility requirements, and he's a veteran, you have to give it to him as opposed to somebody else who also meets the requirements, but may be more qualified or have more experience?
No, what it says is that she'll, we'll take it into consideration, so it's not a mandate that we give. We did give, take into consideration or give preference at our option. So if we give preference to the veteran, the person who didn't get the job can't complain, but we're not obligated to give preference to the veteran, all we're obligated to do is take into consideration.
Okay, all right. I must say that you did a heck of a job of taking policies like this and make them readable and understandable, and so.
That was good.
Yeah, that was a good, good job in terms of, I actually think I know what I was reading at this point. Some of these FLSA things are, they're not readable, in readable form, so.
Yeah, they were so bad, you couldn't even get a line in, line out change.
No, no.
No, you had to do what you did, which is regroup and rethink, so.
One thing for the board, just informational, is that we're still, in Allison's, through Allison's leadership and working with Crystal Hale and others in DSS, we're still marching forward to submit an application to the State Department of Social Services Board for the deviation, which is like an August timeframe is what we're looking at.
A state board meeting in August.
So we're still marching that way.
Okay, all right, any questions of Allison? All right, motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Second, all right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Now Stephanie.
Good evening. Before you, we have a memorandum of understanding, clear consideration regarding personnel services to be offered to broadband authority employees from Orange County employees, this is something that we've already approved.
The authority did approve it?
Did you thoroughly brief them?
Was the voting unanimous?
So what's your name, sir?
That's a record. Okay, any questions of Stephanie on this matter?
Motion approved, second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you again.
I guess we could play the tape back, too.
Okay, old business, four county players.
Yes, sir, Chairman, members of the board, as I spoke to you earlier, draw your attention back to January's meeting where, under the lease of the terms to the Four County Players Incorporated, their playhouse, the old school there in Barbersville, any expansion or any capital projects, substantial ones, will need your approval. You gave your preliminary approval, but withheld the final approval until we worked out the lease, particularly with Barbersville Ruritan, I think we got that box checked to everybody's satisfaction the other month. And then submitting a site plan, all the building plans and everything, I'm pleased to report that the site plan, the zoning permit, and the building plans are all ready to be approved, are ready to be issued. There is a matter working through with their contractor, and I think we're going to work through that to get the permits, or at least a demo permit issued to start the project in time so that they can meet, they have some funding stipulations that require all the permits to be issued, that's why it's a late item, we were working, I guess, to get this thing through. I have included in your, at your desk, a copy of the renderings of the plan as well as a copy of the site plan. Carl Schwaner and Debbie O and with Four County Players are here, I know whether you guys want to say anything, just comment about the whole project, because it seems like we've been working on this for a while.
Yeah, it's actually, we've, it's been at least four years in the, in, in process to, that we've been doing our capital campaign fundraising for this project. We have raised two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for this addition. We have another thirty thousand grant coming when we meet, check all these boxes in this next week before May first. We are very happy with the contractor that we have found, we're thrilled with our plans, we're just, we're ready to break ground and get going. So it's going to change life at the theater a lot and enhance the usage of the building. You guys provide the building for us, this will enhance the sort of behind the scenes operations there and the things that we're doing back behind stage, so really excited to get going with it.
Okay, alright. Do you, do you have an action item for us?
Yes, sir, I, I would recommend that you approve the expansion project pursuant to the lease, subject to the issuance of a building permit and zoning permit for the project.
So moved.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you guys. Got it over the thing.
Okay, Department Director Constitutional Officer Report. Orange County Airport Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Plan Update, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Progers, happy, you want to share?
I'm always happy to see you.
I provided a memo, I think it maybe got a little bit rambling. So hopefully I can clarify what I was trying to say in the memo. The DBE update we have to do if we're going to go after future federal funds of any project that exceeds two hundred and fifty thousand. And we do have a project in the near future on the construction removal that is estimated to be above that number. So this is basically a housekeeping matter. The other item I was trying to explain in the memo that hopefully came across was we are allotted grant funding each year from the FAA, federal grant funds. And those funds accumulate over a period of time. And if we don't expend those funds, then the excess gets allotted to other airports. So we're approaching the point where we're getting ready to forfeit some funds. So, so this, this grant application for the DBE update is, is part of what we use that money for. And the other part is, if you recall, we have acquired three, we, we've acquired easements over three properties so far of the thirteen we're trying to acquire for constructions. So that's eligible to submit for grant reimbursement, as well as the associated land services that go to that piece. I, I think I might have misstated in my memo, it's going to be about thirty-five thousand dollars that's eligible from that project, plus the twelve for the DBE. So we're going to be somewhere close to fifty grand of the grant application.
Is that a single grant or is that broken into two pieces? Okay, so it is the thirty-five plus the twelve or thirteen.
A question, you say we were begin to exceed the four hundred and fifty thousand limit. Are we going to lose some of that because of that, or should, is there a way of advancing any of our projects?
No, by, by applying for the grant from the DBE and the, the amount of acquisition we've gone, done so far, that saves us from losing that.
That gets us under the.
Yes, sir.
In terms of the,
Under the limit.
In terms of the, what was the term they used here, the, the revisiting of the DBE program? Are there regulatory changes or do you, do you see a significant change to our policies? Or is this, it's just a required review?
I don't see any significant changes. The, the biggest item I think that the consultant will do is, as they did the first time, is they'll look at adjoining localities and other localities around the state to see kind of what, what kind of goals they're achieving. So it's really just, it's updating the information, but I don't anticipate any major changes.
Isn't it also, if we were to lose one of these, the monies from one of these grants, odds are better that we wouldn't be in as good a position for future grants? If we, if we didn't utilize the funds.
I don't think it helps our case.
Yeah, I'd say, it's not a positive thing I would.
No, that's.
Using or losing.
Pretty much. Alright, any other questions for Kurt?
Good politician.
Alright, is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, County Attorney's Report?
A report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Administrator's Report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I bring to you tonight a matter concerning roadside litter collection. Wrote a pretty extensive report on this, but the idea stems from the fact that we've been realizing some significant success, both from getting the work done, as well as from a cost savings of roadside litter pickup by regional jail workforce crews. There are two, as you know, there are two crews that rotate among member jurisdictions, in Orange County, Fluvana County, Green County, Louisa and Madison County. And our office, the county administrator offices designate certain roads that either board members or citizens call in because of accumulated roadside trash, they'll go out and pick up. I think Michelle communicated how many bags were picked up over the weekend, bless you. And, and it's, it's been very successful. Also, the, these crews provide periodic grounds maintenance at Barbersville and Booster Park, as well as cutting the, weeding the fence line at the airport, which, I don't know, measures, Kurt, was that a mile worth of fencing or something like that? And so they, we are not charged for their services, and so there's a cost savings there. One of the challenges we have is because of, of the demand, particularly the roadside, it's been difficult for them to be scheduled for the parks maintenance. And so I started working with Superintendent Dyer on an idea that I think had been done in the past, but to see if we could revisit. And essentially, simply what we would do is, there are only certain officers that Superintendent Dyer, Dyer would, would allow to supervise a eligible crew. Now, let me put a finer point. These prisoners are ones that are eligible to work on the outside. You know, and classified, their crimes and their behavior warrant that they can go outside to do this work. And frankly, they want to get outside of the jail to do this type of work. The second is that the supervisors have to be correctional officers that are qualified. And what he suggested is that his transportation officers, ones that transport prisoners to and from court and other jail facilities are ones that he would, would feel were capable of doing this and qualified. He polled them, and there were actually three of them that would be interested in doing weekend work. And this would comprise an eight-hour shift. By the time they muster, get their lunches, get the, get in the vehicle and get out to the, the job site, probably in a, in a four to six hour mode of, of working. They would be interested in doing this on Saturdays and or Sundays. And we would be writing, under, underwriting their hourly, their overtime hourly rate. And I put those rates in there. This, based on a rough calculation, this, we could get two workforce crew days for anywhere from four hundred and seventy dollars to six hundred and twenty dollars per weekend. This would be subject to the supervising, supervising officers availability, weather conditions. There's a lot of things that would factor into this, but the Superintendent Dyer felt pretty comfortable that these three officers would be interested in earning some overtime. The, the next thing in this process is that the two workforce crews that, that rotate through Orange County would continue just as they always have. And that would allow the scheduling of the crews at Booster and Barbersville Park is where's the airport. I know Tim Mowry's here and certainly Kurt can speak to their, their work at, at, at both those facilities. But I bring to you with an idea that obviously seems to be viable. And the source of funds right now would be the board's contingency account to get us going. I'd allow for a little bit of a, a work in period to see what we're talking about and come back to you all, maybe in, in, in a month or two, certainly by, by the end of the fiscal year, beginning of the next fiscal year with how we're doing and, and a potential budget for the ensuing rest of the fiscal year. So like for you all's discussion and guidance.
How much of a conflict do you envision if, if this is done on the weekend? And both, I mean, the, the parks, even the airport for that matter, are all tend to be pretty busy places. More on the weekend than any other time.
Thank you, Mr. White, I didn't, these workforce crews would only be doing litter on the weekends?
Road, roadside litter.
Roadside litter.
Alright.
Their, their grounds maintenance would be during the weekday, which is counter,
Which is what they're doing already.
Counter to when the parks are used because parks, patrons and jail workforce, not really. And Superintendent Dyer, and Dyer expressed that that wouldn't, wouldn't happen.
So it, it, it's opposite of what I thought, that the, the special crews, I'll call them, are really not going to work at the park facilities.
The, the additional crews.
The additional crews, yeah, okay.
So we'll go back to really what the status quo was until we started getting more roadside litter. Now we're adding, supplementing more roadside. Actually, no, we'll, we'll go back to the original intent and the original usage of the jails workforce was roadside pickup. Because we've had such good success with the, the quality and the amount of work and the pride that the inmates take in working on our parks and working at the airport. We have been over utilizing the workforce crew to do that versus roadside pickup. And due to the fact that people passing through this county and any number of residency fit not to use our regular trash facilities, we're now stuck with the job of trying to maintain these roadsides even more than ever.
So I, I, I think the distinction we should make is that we're, we're really enhancing the roadside cleanup.
Absolutely.
That's what these funds are for.
Yes, sir.
Can we go back and look at the side of the road again?
Hopefully, yes. I know we discussed a couple of years ago about a twenty-five hundred dollar littering fine and I.
And then to get to join one of these crews for a few weeks.
Exactly, and that might, that, that might make a difference because it's, it's deplorable. And on that note, there are a, any number of individuals who go out in this county on their own, and they've even put up signs, do not litter. And they go out and do a wonderful job. So there, there are citizens that absolutely do care and take on the initiative themselves also.
You, it's really discouraging when you get out there and pick some of the stuff you pick up.
And there's, there are sections, certain roads predictably.
You do learn a lot more about the great variety of beverage containers.
That and the fast food containers.
And you really want to get there before the, before the mowers do and, and turn all of that styrofoam into styrofoam confetti.
Do you, do you want any kind of action or, or direction at this point?
Just understand that I'll go through the process of starting this up and that we'll, and I'll, Glenn and I can report back to you the draws that we would make to pay for this first few weekends efforts or, you know, get us going. I, I, I want to make sure we get into a schedule that's sustainable. I mean, these three are already working a regular forty-hour week.
Right.
And so they may, I, I just see how they want to take it on and, and, and come back to you at a later date with, with kind of a sustainable schedule and a budget.
Okay, alright. Board comment, anyone?
Well, since we're on the, on the subject of litter, I'd like to circle back to the issue of recycling.
Thank you.
Because.
I shared a love letter today with, did you get my, my forward? Okay, good.
No, no, no. You know, you, you can't ever make any changes without upsetting people because, because people are upset by changes. But, you know, it's a little hard for me to understand why we need to have little windows like this that we're expecting people to put stuff through, what point that really serves. I think we need, and they're, and they're, they're up at a height that some heights challenge people have a problem with. Because you can't put them down low because obviously it would fall out. So it's got to be up high enough so you can substantially utilize the, the container. There's got to be a better way, there's got to be some way we can address this. And I mean, a lot of people are using these containers, they're happy with the containers, that's fine. I don't, I don't want to upset that, but they're, the, the old containers we had were, people were, they were much easier for people to deal with, had larger openings. And we, we got to, we, we need to come up with something that addresses that problem. I know Mr. Whiteside complains. We shouldn't make recycling hard, that's, and the whole idea of single stream was to actually make it simple. And I, and I've had some people, especially those that can't reach that thing, that it's just easier to take it over and put it in the contactor, put it in, in the landfill. And I'd rather, you know, I, I'd suggest, but apparently not feasible, using the old containers. But apparently the contractor can't dump that kind of stuff. That was, I mean, using the same containers, but just throw everything into them.
Well, the, the complaint that I forwarded to Kurt today, I get three points. One, she says she was a, a very short lady, older lady, and she can't reach to dump it in, as you said. Her second complaint was that the, the boxes are full and so can't, can't put anything in there anyway. And the third one was that they took away one of her boxes and sent it to Lake of the Woods. That really got hurt.
I've, I've experienced that.
How she knows that or what makes her think she knows that, I, I do, no.
Well, complaint number two cancels out complaint number one, so you know.
Well, again, the, the boxes are being used. And, and there's a lot of people who can use them, but there are, there's a subset of people who, who are, who, either because of physical constraints or because of, of the way they particularly do their recycling and bring it in, is, it's very inconvenient for them.
Is, and maybe this is a question for Kurt, I don't, I don't want to go down a, a path that we can't sustain. But in a conversation I did have with one person, not, not the one I sent you today, and this was a person that shouldn't have even driven themselves to the landfill, but they did. So I'm, I just give you that for background information. And that person asked me if it would be okay, it was, it was a he, if he could just set his bag there beside the green box. And the attendant would, whenever they're out doing their thing, put it in there for him. Because he said, he, I guarantee you, he couldn't, I, I wouldn't have wanted him to try to. And so that opened up the general question of, is there, you know, on a, on a trial basis, do we dare allow people to, that, that want to participate, that want to recycle, but are challenged for whatever reasons, set of reasons, to just place it by the box and we'll take care of it? I mean, what, I, I, I know that's, I can see your stomach turning at the thought of that. But I'm just trying to find, I don't.
The staff down at, at Lake of the Woods are, have been assisting some of the,
We've instructed staff to help people.
Have helped some of the people getting their stuff into the box.
Well, we talked about stairs and ladders and things that, I'm, I'm scared to death that we have people climbing something. That, that doesn't seem to be a way forward. But if, on a, you know, case by case basis.
All they really have to do is ask.
Well, that, and I think that's the point, that, that if we can, if we will allow this, then we can get the word out somehow and say, Well, that, and I think that's the point, that, that i- if we can, if we will allow this, then we can get the word out somehow and say, you know, just leave it or ask for help and, and we'll, we'll try to. I, I haven't come up with anything better, frankly.
Don't, don't just leave it, I, I have an unattended site where I am.
Yeah, that's.
Well, you couldn't do it there, yeah, no.
Oh, they can, they do.
You couldn't ask for assistance there.
But, but I know that, I think the staff helping out the people have, I haven't had a complaint in a month now.
Some of our staff are themselves probably not.
That's true.
Not really in a position to be very helpful, um, in something like that.
Yeah, I, I hesitated even mentioning it because they, they, they're all sorts of problems with.
Limitations.
Yeah, that's right. I, you know, any, any great ideas?
Unfortunately, I don't have any great ideas at the moment. I will say that Aaron and I met with County Waste. Because I understand, I understand the issues and I understand the complaints. And so I think we had a very productive meeting, we, we met for probably two hours in my office. When I say productive, it, it was, uh, educational on our end, but we had it come up with a slam dunk solution to this problem. From that meeting, what I suggested and I asked County Waste, and they certainly are more than willing to attend, I'd still like to have a work session with the board. And I'd like to have County Waste here, because I think some of the, some of the information that they can provide, I think would be beneficial to the board to hear. It's, it's, it's good information, some of the stuff I didn't know. And, and together, hopefully, we can talk through this and come up with some reasonable solution. If the board's receptive to doing it.
That's all well and good, but I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't, oddly enough, I don't feel like I need to be educated. I mean, the problem is that because of the holes in these boxes and where they are, it's difficult for certain people to dump in there.
I understand.
We can have work sessions from now till the end of the year and it's not gonna change that basic fact.
But they have reasons for why that is.
That doesn't, that doesn't solve the problem.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I, my understanding that those, those holes and openings aren't gonna change, that, it is what it is. We have to deal with what the.
I will say that the.
Well, then maybe we need to get out of our contract with county services and go with somebody else.
That's not as easy.
I, I'm, I'm just telling you, this not, this is ridiculous, there shouldn't, we should not bind ourselves in a, to an agreement that causes as much trouble as this has caused. There, uh, recycling should not be a problem, it should be easy, it should be simple. People, people go to the trouble to collect their recyclables, they ought to be able to go there and dump them. Whether they're seven foot tall or four foot eight tall, whether they're eighty-five or twenty-five.
I think one of the, the challenges is that we're doing single stream where it's, everything's co-mingled and then done apart. Whereas before, people sorted it themselves and so they would assign it to a, a receptacle. And I think, um, one of the things earlier on you were talk, we had talked about was, uh, using a compactor system.
Yes, sir, we're sort of in this conversation.
And, and so that, that's a larger capital investment on the board's part, but that would be just as if you were taking your household white bag and putting it in one compactor. You would take your s- unsorted recyclables and put those in a compactor and then off with them and they'd be the same heights as, as, as a thing. But that's, that's a capital investment the county would make, not County Waste, right?
We're having conversations, County Waste would potentially make that.
Okay.
But again, there are issues with that, it's not as economical as I thought it was gonna be based on their, uh, other locations where they use compacters. And then there's inconvenience to folks because it takes a long time to switch them out, because unlike trash, it's compacted. Recycles, they, they only compact so much, so when they pull the container away from the compactor, a lot of it falls on the ground. So there's a lot of time spent cleaning and picking up before they leave, takes a lot longer to switch out a box. So we just have to think through all those things. I, what I don't wanna do is have you guys, your constituents fussing at you about this problem and come up with a solution that just creates different problems. We need to be aware of all the problems.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the kinda thinking we should've had before we made this decision, because that was a solution to a problem that created more problems. So I agree with you that we don't wanna do that again, we can help it.
I've had a lot of positive comments because of the single reason, single, uh, stream. Uh, but most of those are from people that aren't really proud of getting the, getting it into the, uh, bins.
Well, we were kinda caught in this place because our last vendor was unable to service our boxes. So, uh, you know, I, I guess, I, I guess one thing is that we don't see us not being recycling business, right? That, that we're, we're gonna continue to recycle and then it's just a methodology.
So, I mean, are there other contractors out there with any different, uh, schemes, uh, that would, uh, be more convenient?
Not, not that we found, uh, you know, we, we, we look for solutions every couple of years, uh, different from what we've been doing in the past. We've always looked for better solutions. Um, and County Waste right now, in our locality, is, is about the only game in town. What I'll say about County Waste is they're pretty much taken over, they're, they're one of the biggest players now.
Which means there aren't any other guys.
There's not a lot of other options out there.
There aren't any other options or there's.
Not here, I mean, one option is we can go back to our containers and haul all the stuff to Richmond. I, I, I mean, that's reality.
Because County Waste eventually gets to Richmond, to theirs, and we would be taking it to Richmond, to their.
And there's other vendors in Richmond that aren't servicing this area, but they would certainly receive our material if we wanted to truck it there.
Would we, and if, would they, they take single stream or they need to have it split?
Some of them will, um, but some of them are limiting what they're taking. For instance, and, and I'll just prepare you for this, we could lose glass any day, because there's really no market for glass. And if County Waste loses their market, then they're gonna say no glass. Other localities have already run into that. I know the city of Stanton, uh, their vendor shut them off from glass and plastic with no warning. And that could happen, I mean, that's, that's the nature of, of the recycling industry right now.
Well, it's all going to China eventually and they don't.
They don't want.
It's caused of contamination. We, we just, uh, sat through a seminar and, and, um, China wants material coming into their country to be no more contaminated than point three percent. And the United States right now is averaging twenty to thirty percent contamination. That's a problem, I mean. So, there's a lot of things to work through.
They put in, I mean, I was told by some of the staff down there that they put in larger container holes for they can, to dump stuff. That as they flip it into their trucks, water spills out.
Correct.
And it takes that much longer to clean it up.
Correct.
Are you, where do you think we are in terms of the numbers of boxes and the frequency of pickups? Is that, you, you think you have a, a better view of what, what needs, what frequencies we need there yet or?
We added some boxes, um, to my knowledge, we haven't, we haven't added any additional servicing of the boxes. Um, I, I know that the site, um, that, that was in the email today, um, we service, uh, on Mondays and Fridays. So at the end of the day on Thursday, they're.
You're servicing the boxes on Mondays and Fridays?
In some locations.
Oh, okay.
Not all locations.
I think Barbersville, it's Wednesday, isn't it?
Correct.
Well, I, I know the, the, the little sign they put out in front of ours, that took care of a lot of the problem of the stuff on the ground. It is, once people figured out when it was getting picked up, they have altered their traffic so that, okay, we'll get it dumped. They just empty the box, we'll come like maniacs and, and, and.
Throw it away again.
Yeah. But, but, uh, that stopped a lot of the trash on the ground, so that, that was good.
Yes, well, it, it might not be a good long-term solution, but that, the, the, be, having boxes that are able to receive people's trash. We should be able to deal with that problem either by, as you've done already, adding, adding boxes or monitoring the frequency of the pickup. We should, that one, we should be able to.
But again, I just wanna remind the board, it's all about money.
Oh, sure, sure.
We, County Waste, we haven't serviced them every day if we want to.
Well, I, I, I think, I think we're probably in a situation where there needs to be a, a, a broader conversation. And as a matter of fact, I included it in my response to the, the one that I, uh, sent you today is that, you know, the, the market for a lot of these recyclable products has, has really changed and, uh, you know, the economics are therefore changing. And so you're, we're potentially facing a situation where, you know, it, it's, it's just like all household waste. You know, you, you, it's gonna be, you're spending money to deal with it as opposed to being able to, uh, recover costs. There's gonna be no cost recovery because there's no market. And, uh, that's, that's a different conversation, but that might be where we're headed.
Well, it's cheaper to a recycle bin or to our landfill.
Right, right.
I think that's probably at the end of the day, we're, the cost benefit.
And I'm not so sure that, that we, we shouldn't start that conversation because that's a, that's a reality, not necessarily of our making, but that's, things have changed in terms of.
The state does mandate that we recycle.
Yes.
And that's how much of our annual tonnage, Kurt?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent.
Yeah.
So I don't recall this last general assembly or any recent general assembly session that was going to relieve, relieve us from that mandate.
Well, we recycle a lot of metal, if it's counted in that weight, we're.
It is, yeah.
It is, so we exceed, we're, we're.
We, we exceed the number, we don't have problems exceeding the number.
But it, it, it's, it's changing, it, it's not, it's not a static.
And, and metal is the only thing that we receive in any kind of revenue, we're not getting revenue on anything.
May, maybe the, the, uh, the, the work session that needs to take place is a, a little bit of an education for us in terms of what's happening in the recycling market. But also, uh, to, to discuss, you know, what, what is the future likely to, uh, uh, to, to do, uh, for us in terms of there being markets for these products or starting and stopping various products and these kinda things, you know, it's.
I'm, I'm very concerned about glass right now, that's, it's very tenuous. At, at any moment, County Waste could send in more glass.
And they would just cover up the hole for glasses, uh?
There's no hole for.
They always, no single hole, they have to say, we'll have to change the sign and say no glass.
The only one you're not gonna get the glass through is the one for Cardinal. And it's closed.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
You get a little cup of bottle, you can make that go. And on an associated note, Italy has a pilot program of recycling diapers right now.
Oh, joy.
Disposable diapers, they have a pilot program recycling them, it's in conjunction with Procter and Gamble. So I, unfortunately, unfortunately, I think that is going to be where you see a lot of the future of recycling go is partnerships between jurisdictions and manufacturers. There, there's, there's just, there's no market, there's just no market.
Sorry.
You think we have problems with contamination now?
Kurt, I wonder what the Chinese will think of that?
If County Waste says no more glass tomorrow.
Well, to me, that's a separate issue, I mean, if, if there isn't a glass market, we can't do anything about that. So I'm not even, I mean, Kurt's concerned about it, I'm not particularly concerned about it. There isn't a glass market, then, then, I mean, we don't have, we don't have recycling for old mattresses right now, uh, you know, so, I mean, there's, there's, there's a whole list of things that, that we can't recycle. I'm more concerned about the stuff that we can recycle and that we make it as easy as possible for people to use it.
I, I, I was maybe more down in the weeds, so if no glass, but somebody throws glass and then that contaminates the water. So that even with a sign, but if somebody puts it in that.
Yeah, people have got, people have got their bins now and they're throwing glass into it. And, and so we gotta talk to an education thing to say, don't throw that in your, uh, recycle bin or throw it in your trash. And they'll be.
Most people who recycle, I, my, 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 my belief is that most of them sort of understand this. They might not be happy about it, but if they see the sign says no glass, then they.
They're, they're pretty guilty about it.
I think Mr. Johnson's right, it's, but it, it becomes, and they're very, very sensitive to making sure what goes where and how, and as long as we communicate.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
Any, any other board comment? Do we dare try and match that? Okay, any questions on the information items? Appointments. I thought I was gonna be doing one tonight, but I have been playing phone tag and so I'm not prepared. Anybody have any appointments? Okay. Calendar. A lot, a lot going on with the calendar. Some of which I didn't completely understand, but, uh.
Just chairman.
One thing I would point out is that, uh, the, the two, uh, sort of groundbreakings or whatever are, are not on the calendar, so. One on the seventh and one on the fourteenth.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. White, I, I would like to make an acknowledgement. We've had a journalist from the local newspaper for the last few years, who tonight, as her last board meeting, she'll be attending. Um, and I just want to say thank you. Uh, I truly appreciate the coverage that you have given this board and this county. I believe it is truly journalism and not just today's reporting, and, um, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sure of that, yes.
She's not leaving because we think we did.
I start saying, did we pull her, her credential or something?
No, she's, she's moving on to a, a, a new opportunity that's better for herself and, uh.
And at home.
I commend her for that and, but you will be sorely missed here.
I certainly, I, I've worked with a number of, of reporters over the years and, and, and Amber's certain, ranks it as one of the best.
Uh, what about these public hearings on the calendar, we okay with all those?
Yeah.
Alright, proceed. Alright. Close meeting.
Alright. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss a closed meeting the following. Discussion of assignment performance salaries of specific public officers, employees of the public body and administration. Discussion of consideration of acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body with respect to wilderness shores. Consultation of legal counsel employed retained by the public body regarding specific legal management requirements of legal advice by such counsel concerning historic districts. Whereas pursuant to sections two point two thirty seven eleven A one, A three and A eight of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of forestated matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So moved, second. Want to say aye?
Aye.
We're in close.
Excuse me. And we, we should be out, we're just a good time to message the, uh, government.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters will also be exempted from open meeting requirements. And that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin.
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Well, then we gotta do public comment.
I don't want anybody signed up.
Open public comment, anyone signed up to speak?
Understood from the chairman, we have one speaker signed up.
Okay.
Uh, Mark Johnson, resident of Barbersville.
I've decided to cede my time.
Alright, as long as the public here come in, now, now I need a motion to adjourn, alright.
So moved.
All favor.
Really?
Pack up. He was tempted.
How would I address my.